All right. Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Thursday night, April 20th, meeting of the Colonial School Board. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met an executive session tonight prior to this meeting to discuss the Personnel Report, Student Discipline, and School Safety and Security. The session lasted approximately 30 minutes. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Christian and our boys' basketball team.
The boys' basketball team had a simply fantastic year culminating in the District One, PIAA District One Championship Game, a big win over Springford. Fortunately, I was happy to have courtside seats to see an outstanding effort, and all season was outstanding. So we have Coach D and his team here to be recognized by the Board. Coach, thanks for coming.
You're good? People can hear me from anywhere, usually so. The microphone's fine. How are you? Everyone's well? I have to apologize because over half the team is out chasing basketball starting tonight in AAU stuff, which I didn't realize. So it's hard for me to yell at them when they're doing the very thing that got them honored in the first place. But we do have some, a good amount of our guys here and a couple of coaches. And I just will say quickly about the season as Dr. Christian mentioned, it was a lot of fun and these are great kids. We had a, we had, I had a blast with them. It was a year of accolades, individual accolades, and you don't get those, obviously we all know all the time. So we had 3,000 point scorers in a season, Quadir on our side and Aaron Daly and Abby Sharp on the other side. And then we, you know, both teams won the suburban one league, we won the postseason tournament, then you go on to win the district. And just to see the 500 and 600 students coming out again and the gym being packed and so much community support. So obviously, we're ahead of the game. We all want to win state titles and everything else. And, you know, that's part of the whole thing, winning and losing. So the big picture, I'm greedy, we all get greedy like that. But in the big picture backing out of it, what a great district and what a great amount of fun it's been for, for us guys coaching these kids. So the first guy up is Quadir Bennett. And if you followed us at all, he's just had a four-year varsity career. Stand right here, Q. Good job, my friend. Q had hit his 1,000th point total this season and close to 1,400 career points. And he's working hard. We're trying to work hard right now to get him in the right school postseason, post-grad. But as much as he is a great competitor on the court, he's one of the most humble guys in the world. So, Q. Benny Marsicko. Benny is junior year. And Benny just is real cool, calm, and collected. He's just improved and improved. And then at Lower Murray High School, I knew Benny was the coolest guy in the world. So with a minute ago in a game where we were up by 14 and then up by two in a raucous crowd, most of them being our kids, which was great, I asked Benny to just go in the game and make sure he sealed the game for us after having not played the whole game. So he goes in and calmly knocks down two free throws. The first one, he made it look easy by going around three times and in. I know he does that on purpose sometimes. And, and ended up being a hero of the day and leading us to getting us to Temple University. Benny Marsicko. Good job, Ben. I put a little pressure on this next young guy who's only a freshman. And after the season, I just told him, you have to replace Quadir Bennett. So no pressure from him. And that is his job. And what a great young man who absolutely loves this sport and is just so full of life and enthusiasm and work ethic. So we often say in our program, the tradition continues. And you can handle the pressure, right, man?
Yes.
You want it?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Mani Sajid. And we have a great young point guard, Jaden Colesy, who's led us for three years. And so to show you how we think ahead, we have a young guy in Jack Hayes, another freshman who had a great JV season, then joined us for the varsity, the playoff run. And, well, he looks like a nice young guy, doesn't he? Mother just said he has that 1970s Steve Miller Band haircut going, which is great. But he is a killer of a player. And no pressure on him, but he's got to fill shoes too, which we expect him to do. Jack Hayes. Even if Eddie Petrino wanted to get out of this tonight, he had no choice. That wasn't happening. So. And Eddie is Mr. Legs, Daddy Long Legs, and I hope that just keeps going. We are blessed with a group of ninth grade kids that absolutely are the best kids and they love the game and they're crazy. And that's just 32 years of coaching in a program where we've been sneaking in gyms forever. And they're just there every day, every day. So that's the fun of it. It's bigger than just the wins and losses. And Eddie, we have high hopes for, and I love his passion. And we brought him up for the playoffs as well. So we're going to beat him up, put about 15 pounds on him, and we're going to be good. Right there? Eddie Petrino. Now, we have two of our coaches with us here tonight. And one of, both of them have been with me a long time, and Mark Berman, Berman. And Mark has been, played for us and graduated 2009, longtime volunteer coach. Started with us about 2014, 2015. And Mark's the steady one, and also the technology genius. So if we do anything on Twitter or anything, I have nothing to do with it. It's him. Terrific with the guys, great workout guy, and another great run for us this year. Berman, thank you. And you want to talk about passion and obsession. I just drug Coach Chuck Moore out of a practice. So this man knows how to dress, whether it's at a banquet or this. These are still the most expensive pants in the room, I want you to know, because I know I got them for him. And Charles and I have been together a long time. I knew him since he was seven years old. And he's obviously very well-known in the community. And without him, I got trouble coaching year-round. And whether it's games or practices or all the phone calls for advice. So another great support with me all season long. Chuck, the players love you and we appreciate it. Chuck. We're good. We'll at least win 17 games next year with that. I gave a little bit of a lengthy speech the other day. Someone might have heard, too, might have heard. And I asked Mani to judge me. This one is totally winged. The other one was 30 hours of prep. So he's telling me what I should do in future. It's more pleasure. Where are we? Oh, they went this way.
All right. So this is when we usually say you can all leave. But, you know, Eddie, you're welcome to stay. Bye, guys. All right. This is a motion to approve minutes as presented in Items 4B through 4G, which includes the following committee meetings listed below. May I have a second? Gail? Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Next is a motion to approve financial reports as presented in Items 5B through 5M for March 2023. May I have a second? Sue? Any questions or comments? All in favor? This is a motion to approve the March 2023 Treasurers Report. May I have a second? Kathy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? All right. I will turn it back over to Dr. Christian for our superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mrs. Petrino. After the tragic events in Nashville, we did receive a few inquiries from our families regarding, and staff regarding our efforts to maintain a safe and secure environment in our schools. We all know how unfortunate it is that we have to do this. But it is the reality that we need to be prepared and we need to make sure that we take care of our most precious cargo, our students, as well as our faculty, staff, administration, and volunteers. Tonight, I'll be doing a brief presentation to highlight some of our efforts to create a safe and caring environment for our students. Mr. McDonald is also here, our head of security, and Mr. Lally's here, our facilities director and operations director, in case the Board has any questions at the end of the presentation. We will take this PowerPoint slide that you'll see, or actually Google Slides, and we'll post it on our website tomorrow. Obviously, when we talk about creating that safe environment, the Board has been very supportive of our efforts, and it's a continual process. We continue to make enhancements to our building features, our processes, and of all things, as Mr. McDonald has often said, the human element is so critical to this process, whether it is our counselors helping students with mental health needs, whether it is our security guards, our bus drivers, people who use Safe2Say, our hall monitors, the human element is critical. A few years ago, we expanded our security force for the public certification. The district has traditionally had security officers in the high school, long since before I arrived in the district six years ago, as well as the middle school. Four years ago, we added a few elementary security officers who rotated from building to building. And we made sure that we kept the pattern of the rotation secretive, just so we could have a secure plan in place and a private plan in place. After the tragedy of Uvalde, Texas, however, the Board quickly acted and authorized administration to make sure that we have full-time security in each of our buildings. They not only greet visitors on a daily basis, they walk around the buildings to make sure our teachers and our faculty and our staff are following all the secure protocols we have in place. They check for prop doors. They're just, they help with dismissal, they help with arrival. It's that human element that is so critical. And Tim and Joe did an outstanding job hiring the three new guards. There, several of them are members of our community. They've had kids that go through the district, so they're very connected to our schools, which is, which is an added benefit. Our relationship with Conchacan Police, Plymouth Police, Plymouth Police and White Marsh Police is outstanding. We meet with them, Joe, Tim and I meet with them at a minimum twice a year, not only to review the state-required memorandum of understanding that we're, that we have, but just to talk about our practices and procedures for keeping our buildings safe. You can't drive from a school to a school without seeing one of our local police officers on our community roads, visiting our buildings, walking through, sometimes having lunch in the lunchroom. They're at our high school campus every day for dismissal and arrival. And, and we're very fortunate, especially in Plymouth where the middle school is, we have a direct access. We have a road right there. So it's not just the proximity, it's the connection that we have. Our officers attend all of our sporting events, great relationship with our high school athletic director. And, and so, you know, we, we know that will continue, but it's important not just to have them in close proximity, it's important for them to know who the administrators are, for them to know how to access our buildings. And they have all of our building plans that they would need. And we hope never to have to use them for a tragedy like that. We have over 100 drills that we practice on an annual basis, from lockdown drills to intruder, intruder alert drills, reverse lockdown, fire drills, inclement weather drills. I'm sure our high school students know that, right? We're required by law to have a monthly fire drill. And when we were all in school, that was all we did. Those are the practices we had. Unfortunately, we have to have these other types of drills. And while they're not, we don't like to think of the reality as how unpleasant it is if we would have to do them. It's important that we're flexible and we practice them so that we, we have a plan in place should we need it. It's not just drills that we do. We participated in 2020, the county, state, and federal agencies asked to use one of our buildings for a, in the summer for a drill, a practice. And so Joe and I showed up with Tim down at Conchacan Elementary School, and we spent about five or six hours there. And we saw the unbelievable resources that Montgomery County has and the county and that the state has. And they did an enactment of an intruder into the building. They had helicopters show up, people sliding down ropes onto the roof. It was unbelievable. We had to participate because we were employees of the district and they had 911 operations there. And we've always said in the summer, if our local departments, fire department, police department, need to be in our buildings and practice their drills, that's the perfect time to do it. We did make sure we notified the community that it was a practice drill so that they didn't think that there was actual emergency going on. This past fall, a team of administrators went, were over at Normandy Farms, Pennsylvania, Department of Education, along with the Attorney General's Office sponsored the Safe School Summit. And we attend all of those. So we spent the day there. And the best part about the day is, well, there was some great information. We found that with each presentation, we were doing elements of those of what they presented. Could we enhance what we're doing? Certainly. But we had a strong foundation in place. So we picked up some nuances that would help us, but it reaffirmed the solid procedures and practices that we have. We've done assessments where we've brought in outside agencies to come assess our safety plans, walk our buildings, and then they meet with Mr. McDonald, Mr. Lally, the principals, myself, and tell us where, if we have weak points, how we can address them. And our last assessment, we really, we were complimented on how well organized our plans are, how well communicated they are, and that we have strong protocols in place. Are we perfect? No. And anybody who thinks they can be perfect in this, you know, you're fooling yourself. You have to be flexible. You always have to be revising what you're doing to make sure you can keep our, our students and staff safe. I'd say I get probably, and I'm sure Tim and Joe get more than I do, I get daily emails with products that are available that will make our buildings safer. We have parents and guardians who share their ideas. We have families who work in the security business who share those ideas. And we get all the regular solicitations. Today, there was a, in West Conchacan and Marriott, there was a safety and security sort of open house. And so we attended that. We're always looking at the products that we think could be viable for us to implement. You can spend a lot of money on, on various technologies, safety equipment, and not make your building any safer. And so there are great products out there, and there are those that are not so great. We've recently enhanced all the, all the locks in every classroom in the district, every classroom. And that's 450-plus rooms and offices and everything else. And we think it's a great product, but we also checked with the police chiefs in the area. We checked with the fire department to make sure that they were okay with it. So you just can't say, hey, we're going to do this and think it's going to be a panacea. But, and, and I credit Tim's team and Joe's team for making sure that they look at those. And if they have a, a serious need that they have, we find a way to do it. And this Board has always supported that. We've also implemented, we had a visitor in the fall, if the Board remembers, regarding a product that offers artificial intelligence to add to our cameras. So we're in the process of phasing that in. While not inexpensive, we really think the product is outstanding. And so I won't get into detail because our plans have to be confidential, but we're incorporating that into our, the already hundreds of cameras we have around the district. So that extra feature will only provide an even safer opportunity for our families and for our students. We just changed all of the two-way radios to make sure we have, we have a good connection in all of our schools so that our security officers can speak to the principals as needed in the front office. So they've been brand new throughout the district. You know, it doesn't sound like a lot, but all of our classrooms have phones, and that's critical. We know at the middle school, we're facing challenges with cell phone use. We believe a cell phone tower is going in soon. We're purchasing extenders to try to get better cell phone use there. Mr. Bogley has issued a complaint with the FCC because we know our neighbors there are having difficulty as well. So we're hopefully that that's rectified. But we do have hard lines in each classroom to help address that. We've, for years, have used Raptor when visitors come to the school so we can check, do background checks instantaneously. And we've recently upgraded our, our Global Connect, our mass email service, which we use just as recently as yesterday, to send out a message to our community. So we try to, we get a lot of requests to make phone calls, like I do when we have snow days, for like fundraisers or upcoming events. And we really, we have to say no to many of those because when we use the emergency system, we want it to be an emergency. We want it to be listened to. We want, we don't want those calls to say, hey, what did you just say? Because I get so many of those. And so I get a lot of requests and have to say no to a lot of those because we want emergency calls to be just that, for, for that immediate response. Just so the Board knows too, we can send messages that are general in nature and we can send emergency. When we hit the emergency button, it goes to your email, it goes to your voicemail, and then it circles back. If, if nobody picks up, it keeps calling. So when we get complaints that I called somebody's house four or five times, that means I hit the emergency button. And that's usually when it's 5:15 or 6:00 AM and it's snowing heavily or, or something else. We can't just be reactive. We have to look at the proactive supports that we can have in place for our students. Felix Scherzinger and Mrs. Burke presented to the Board at CRSL previously about all the mental health supports that we offer to our district. We have to be able to try to identify when we have students in need or a faculty member in need of assistance before little things become big things and before we have a tragic event. Each of our schools has a student assistance program team. We call them our care teams. Throughout the Commonwealth, most middle, middle schools and high schools have to have one. There are not many districts that have them in every school. And so we think it's important to make sure that even if we do an intervention and there's nothing substantial that's uncovered, at a minimum, we've gotten parents and guardians involved, we've gotten counselors involved, we've offered an opportunity to get resources. And we certainly can welcome Felix back as our mental health specialist. And Karen's office can do additional presentations for the community and for the Board. What we do to try to make sure we can train our staff to identify students who may be at risk, and what we can do to provide supports for those families so that they don't grow into bigger challenges down the road. In addition to the training last summer, the administrative workshop we did with the county regarding our physical safety and our evacuation plans, we did all those different tabletops. The next day, we invited Montgomery County officials to come in, and Karen procured three different organizations that talked about, talked to the team of administrators about how to identify students who are in need of mental health or in need of counseling. And they gave us statistics, not just from how kids were recovering from the pandemic, but also warning signs to look for. And we did the entire, it was mandatory for every administrator to be there, whether you have direct contact with students or not. Because when, when we're in school on a daily basis, everybody has some level of contact with our kids. And then we provided turnaround training as we opened school with our faculty. And we have our faculty and staff, we have a plethora of teachers who are members, and counselors and nurses that are all members of the SAP teams in each school. And we offer the, Karen's office is responsible for getting those individuals trained so they can serve on those teams. Lastly, we have Safe2Say. It's been in existence, I think, for five years now, four or five years. That is the anonymous tip line. Last night's communication about the brush fire we had in the back, we offered it to families who wondered if they had any information on, on the cause of it. We got a couple tips. We get, on a weekly basis, we probably get five or six Safe2Say calls. So the Board understands when someone calls Safe2Say, it goes to a central location in Harrisburg, I believe it's in Harrisburg, and there are counselors on the line. And they, whether it's via text or on the phone, they interact with the individual that calls. They try to find, they don't, they're not so worried about, they're not finding identifiable information. They're trying to find out, where are you located? What's the problem? What's the severity of the problem? What school district is it associated with? And then what we have done is we have multiple people assigned to each building. So let's say it's July and Dr. Bacani is on vacation and he doesn't have his phone on. He has at least two or three other people that are on that that will get that. Same with the middle school. In the elementary schools where there's only one principal, central office folks are assigned to that. So that we have multiple people assigned so that we don't miss a message. And so it's not uncommon for, at 6:00 AM for us to get, we get a text alert and we get an email. And somebody, whoever sees it first will screenshot it, send it out to that particular group if it's related to the high school. And so that by 7:30, when, if the student is identified and needs help, we have somebody available to come in and provide assistance for that student. Or at least investigate what's, what's, what's being alleged. So there are unfortunately reports throughout the county from neighboring school districts that Safe2Say is not always used in the right manner. It's been used for practical jokes, it's been used to try to get other students in trouble, it's been used to create false reports. So while I think it's very well-intended and for the most part is working, there, there, it is time-consuming at times because you have to treat every, everything that the counselors from the central office and Safe2Say send out to us. I can tell you from our experience, most of the calls we get relate to students who are concerned about friends of theirs who may need help, whether it's with a drug and alcohol situation, a family situation, personal situation, or they need to talk to somebody. And I would say nine out of 10 of those cases, if I call Mr. Kaplan or Dr. Bacani, they say, we're aware that student is already in our process via SAP, but it was great that somebody reached out to provide a friendly support. So, and then we, when, when that type of situation happens, we still make sure we call the parents and guardians to make sure they're aware of what's taking place. So the plan, I want to reiterate, is a continual process. It is never going to be finalized, but we try to have enough supports in place that we make sure that we never have to use them. And I want to commend Mr. McDonald and his team, and Mr. Lally, and Mr. Bogley for their efforts with facilities and technology. And I want to thank our faculty and administrative and support staff for cooperating and enforcing it. And mostly, I want to thank the Board for supporting it. Because when we've come to you with requests, whether it be for additional human resources and/or material resources, the Board has not hesitated to support creating a safe environment in our schools. If the Board, I apologize for rambling. If the Board has questions for either Tim, Joe, or my If the board has questions for either Tim, Joe, or myself, we can entertain those now. And if you think of questions moving forward, certainly email us and, and we're happy to respond to them.
Dr. Christian, do you mind highlighting the types of things that Safe to Say is ideally used for?
Its intent is to make sure schools are safe. So when we went to the initial training, it would be for anything that they thought would be something reported to the police, potential threats, problems in school. What, what has actually happened is, and I would, I'm not going to put a percentage, but the majority of calls have been related to students who, who need help with mental health supports. Would you agree with that, Karen?
So I have a question. With the fire drills and all of the different lockdown drills that each of the schools perform, what is the means of which teachers ensure that all of the kids have gotten out of the building?
Excellent question. So we have the traditional drills, there's a responsibility of several people from the office as well as teachers to take attendance for the entire school. And so we have a drill here, what you will hear on the radios, it's, it's silence. It is each room checking in to make sure they have the correct number of students. And if they say, Mike Christian's missing, you hear somebody come back on from the attendance office, say, he's accounted for, they don't say whether it's absent or anything, he's accounted for. On top of that, I think it's twice, it's at least once, when the, our local police departments come to observe it, they will pull an adult and a student from the drill and to make sure that we're following what we're following. So I have not been pulled yet, I think I would be conspicuous in my absence, but, but they, but they definitely do that. And, and then they go around internally and make sure we followed all the requirements of closing and locking all of our doors. I did get in trouble for that, I didn't do that. And so it's, it's a very deliberate process.
And I'm not sure this is necessary, however, the school district I work in, they have a program called Ruvna, and it's all on the phones, and so all of the teachers on their phones can take attendance. So I don't know how much that costs, if that's worth it, but I did think it was an extremely, it seemed like an efficient way, I don't know.
Developed by a Plymouth White Marsh grad, and we use it at the high school. And, so, yep, so, and I think, I know it's constantly being updated, and, so yeah, everybody has it. We could, right now, we've just been using it at the high school, but we do have an attendance process for each of the schools. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there any public comments on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, Will.
All right. So this is a motion to approve the food services department grant and donation as outlined below. The Pennsylvania Department of Education has selected our district to receive a food service equipment grant. PDE received over 300 applicants, and 130 buildings are being fun, or, yeah, are funded. The grant is an award of $6,926.52 and will be used to purchase a new reach-in freezer for Conshohocken Elementary School. Secondly, thanks to the generation, generosity of both giant food stores in Conshohocken and Plymouth Meeting, and our community members who rounded up their tolls at the register and donated choice points, we are receiving a donation of $11,599.35. The funds are earmarked to support food security and food assistance initiatives, and will be used to provide meals for our students over the summer. Do I have a second?
Gail? Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Dr. Christian?
Thank you. A motion to approve the personnel report as outlined in items 10B and 10C. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, state mandated requirements.
May I have a second? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now our student representatives, Yunaya and Bella.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Christian, school board members and community. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide the monthly school student report. Unfortunately, Olivia and Emma are both unable to be here tonight, so we are the junior representatives to fill in. The White Marsh Elementary School Carnival will be Thursday, May 25th, from 4:30 to 7:30. The PTO has been working all winter and spring planning this carnival, and they are excited to once again do this one of the most popular annual events at White Marsh. There will be lots of games, food, fun, and hopefully good weather. This spring, White Marsh anticipates more pretzel days, the PTO plant sale, restaurant fundraisers, Smile Mile, Field Day, and K-3 Step Up Day.
On March 14th, all students at Ridge Park attended and participated in the Kit and Caboodle Assembly, an interactive storytelling adventure. The theme was pioneer travel on the Oregon Trail from a strong, self-reliant, fictitious pioneer woman's point of view, perfect for Women's History Month. Once again, Mrs. O did an excellent job putting together choral concerts for our families to enjoy seeing their children in action. First graders performed at CES on the morning of March 16th and kindergarteners on March 22nd. Students in the autistic support classes visited Fun E Farm on Tuesday, March 29th. The three classes rode horses, saw other farm animals, and painted horseshoes for a craft. For the eight kindergarteners, connected with the kindergarten science curriculum as they recently experienced the baby chicks and will be watching caterpillars turn into butterflies next.
On March 21st, the students and staff at Plymouth Elementary participated in Rock Your Socks in honor of World Down Syndrome Day. Throughout the week, teachers read aloud to their students in order to learn about friends with Down Syndrome and what makes them unique. Kindergarten students performed their spring concert, sang a silly song on March 29th. Families attended the concert in the morning while students and staff attended in the afternoon. The kindergarten students, led by Mrs. Tracy O'Shea, put on a fantastic performance.
Conshohocken Elementary collected 500 pounds of clean plastic in partnership with the Queen's Club, and we will be receiving a donated bench on April 20th that is made out of the recycled plastic. Thank you to the Conshohocken parents and Miss Tonya Silverelli for partnering the third grade Helping Hands with the Queen's Club. During the month of April and continuing into May, third grade students will collect donations of gently used children's clothing and items to donate to Cradles to Crans. In June, they will get to visit the Cradles to Crans Giving Factory. Thank you to Mrs. Campbell, Mrs. Donovan, and Mrs. First for continuing this tradition of giving in a safe way for our students. Conshohocken Elementary teachers, Mr. Cortland, Mr. Steve Gromon, and Mrs. Elise Nevins, Mrs. Erin McMahone, and Mrs. Jessica Munn are running the first ever second, third grade after-school sports club. The club started on April 11th and will run into May on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Over 70 students are staying after for this club to develop positive sportsmanship and skill development.
CES students are exploring many sports in physical education like tennis and lacrosse. In health, fourth graders are learning about the negative aspects of smoking, while fifth graders venture into their human growth and development unit. CES students are also participating in a program called Too Good for Drugs in which students learn about making healthy choices and resisting peer pressure. The fourth graders have officially finished their time in the WEP program, working at PW to enhance their swimming skills. CES just wrapped up their math bags competition. Fourth and fifth graders have competed against one another to get to know their multiplication facts for the past few months. It was a lot of fun. Reading Olympics was successful this year with CES sending six teams to Hatford or Horsham. Two of our teams brought home first place Blue Ravens. The PTO hosted two great events last month, including Big Oneay and ice skating. Lastly, CES is getting ready to administer PSAS in the following weeks.
CMS students participated in the Best Buddies Ball on March 17th. The Buddies Ball was held at Kennett Middle School, and fun was had by all. We are so excited to have a CSD team advancing to the Odyssey World Finals for the second year in a row. The CMS Odyssey of the Mind team, coached by parents Steve Hormel and Jason Steeg, solved classics The Walls of Troy Division Two problem, which required team members to create a skip which puts their own spin on the classic Greek legend of the Trojan Horse. This team earned second place overall at the state competition, qualifying to compete at the World Finals in East Lansing, Michigan, May 24th to 27th. We are excited to welcome the families of incoming sixth grade students to two events here at CMS. On Tuesday, May 23rd, we will hold our parent night where families can learn about our CMS philosophy, schedule, and team structure. Fifth grade students will also be visiting during the school day on May 22nd, 24th, and 25th.
Although Emma and Olivia can't be here tonight, they wanted to say that they had a great time on the senior trip in Florida. Thank you to Dr. Bacani, Dr. Christian, and the board for your support. Prior to spring break, PW held their distinguished graduate ceremony, recognizing Mr. Alabor, Mr. Salvatore Janon, and Mr. Lawrence Larry Williamson Jr. Our student coalition welcomed Mrs. Cara Filler, who shared her amazing and impactful presentation to the student body. The PWHS Cancer Awareness Club hosted a Great Karaoke for a Cause event on March 15th. PWHS Colonial Players had their fantastic musical, You're in Town, at the start of March. The show was directed by Mr. Engel, and all of the students involved did a great job.
This is the conclusion of our April 20th, 2023 student report. Thank you for all your time, have a nice evening.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to new business. Rick?
Motion to approve and adopt the 2023-2024 Proposed Final Budget. The Finance Committee reviewed the 23-24 Final Proposed Budget and recommends the adoption of the budget. The PDE 2028 budget document is attached and will be available for public review in the District Business Office and on the District website. The proposed final budget includes a 2.9% tax increase. Final budget will be considered at the May 25th, 2023 board meeting.
May I have a second to that motion? Sharon? Any questions or comment?
Mr. Degen, this number can be changed between now and May 25th?
That's correct, yes. PDE requires that the final proposed budget sit for at least 30 days for public inspection. Passing this proposed budget tonight allows us the 30 days to the May 25th meeting, at which point it can be modified, can change, but we at least have to get this on the agenda tonight for approval.
Okay, and that will be discussed at our next?
At the next Finance Committee meeting.
Finance meeting, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Mrs. Moore?
This is a motion to approve the adoption of Policy 331, Reduction of Staff. On a first-read basis, this is a new policy and is categorized as a legal liability.
May I have a second? Chris? Questions and comments? Dr. Christian, can you just, even though it's a reduction of staff, can you just reassure everyone that's not what we're looking to do?
No, we have to have, we have to have the policy in place so that there's a formal process should the need arise. That would arise if we had a decrease in enrollment, which is clearly not happening with the 513 first graders that we have, and the nearly 400 kindergarteners that are coming next year. If there were programmatic changes, which we've already had our curriculum meeting, and we're only adding curriculum, so we've not made any reductions of curriculum, so, but should that ever happen, the board needs to have a policy in place.
Thank you. All in favor? Sue?
This is a motion to approve the revisions to the board policies outlined below on a second-read basis. Policy 338 is a policy on sabbatical leave. It has a new title, number, and language to conform to PSBA standard format, formerly Policy 438, Leave of Absence Sabbatical Leave for Restoration of Health. So it's just a change to the new PSBA recommended policy. Also, Policy 707, Use of District Facilities and Equipment, and Policy 251, which is a policy on homeless students.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve Health Advocate Solutions, Inc., as the district employee, I'm sorry, as the district's employee assistance provider effective July 1st, 2023. The initial term of the agreement is three years.
May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Gail?
This is a motion to appoint Fox Rothschild LLP as solicitor for the Colonial School District for the time period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th of 2024, based upon the following: an annual, annualized retainer of $22,000 per year, a base hourly rate of $200, alternate rates in accordance with this engagement letter, rates as established by the insurance carrier where Fox Rothschild LLP is an approved provider. And the motion to approve the HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the district and Fox Rothschild LLP as a result of Fox Rothschild LLP handling cases that involve protected health information on behalf of the district.
May I have a second to that motion? Sue? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Sharon, conference request?
Thank you very much.
You're worried, we know. All right, this is a motion to approve the conference requests outlined below. These requests were reviewed at the Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting on April 17th, 2023. Equity and Advancement Officer Melissa Figueroa Douglas to attend the AASPA DEI Summit in Baltimore, Maryland from April 20th through the 23rd, 2023. Plymouth White Marsh High School teachers Brian Adams, Michelle Canning, Rebecca Hepler, and Rebecca Duffy to attend the IB Global Conference in Toronto from July 27th through 31st, 2023. No calls?
I have a second. Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And Sharon?
Out-of-state student trip. Motion to approve Plymouth White Marsh High School Marine Science and Oceanography Club students to travel to the Cape May, New Jersey WOW Watch and Research Center on May 31st, 2023. There is no cost to the district.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Solicitors' report?
I have no report.
All right, now we will do our committee reports. Chris?
No report for CRSO.
Sure. So again, the recent curriculum meeting was held on April 17th. Library media specialist Brooke Carpenter and Brian Adams and sixth grade teacher Bill Ryan shared with the board their experience and takeaways from the 2023 Pennsylvania Educational Technology Expo and Conference that was held on February 14th. We also had reading specialist Rebecca Caslow, who shared with the board her experiences and takeaways from the literacy symposium held at the AIM Institute that she attended on March 13th. Mr. Pasidi provided an overview of the transition to a structured literacy framework at Colonial. Jem Ramsden and Liz Morris presented on the attributes of structured literacy and compared the characteristics of structured literacy with the characteristics of balanced literacy. They also presented videos of various classroom teachers demonstrating lessons on characteristics of structured literacy. Mr. Pasidi also gave an update on Title III ELD, English Language Development, in the district, and shared that the next family engagement event this year will be held on June 1st at CMS from 5:30 to 7:30, which will have games, activities, and refreshments. Mrs. Gregitis and Mrs. Burke also shared that they have been working on implementing goal setting across the district and implementing a social and emotional learning approach within the K-12 curriculum that is reinforced with the counselors. The committee reviewed one conference request, and we already went over that one, so I'm not going to speak to it, the conference requests as well.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Will, facilities?
On Monday, April 10th, FMT Committee met to discuss a variety of plans to get this current building, CES, optimized for future student enrollment. There were four plans GKO Architects proposed. We are still in early discussions, so nothing in the books.
All right, thank you. Finance, Rick?
Finance Committee met on Monday, April 10th. The committee reviewed the 2023-2024 proposed final budget we just voted on. The proposed budget has a .708 mil, which is a 2.9% tax increase to cover an expected deficit of $2.986 million. There are still opportunities to adjust this total if any factors change prior to the final vote, either from a revenue or an expense line. The board also reviewed the current 22-23 budget to actual comparison. Although special education costs are up significantly over budget and some revenue line items are down from 21-22, the overall revenue and expenses are tracking close to budget and will not have an additional deficit.
Thank you so much. Human Resources, Sue? No report. Thank you. The intermediate unit, Sharon?
Sure. So with the IU, a couple of key initiatives that are occurring this spring include an Earth Day celebration on April 21st. There is also a Legislative Breakfast that they're hosting on April 28th at the Aloy in King of Prussia. And as I mentioned last month, or previously, the MCIU Education Foundation golf outing will be on May 15th at the Brookside Country Club in Pottstown. Additional info can be found on the IU website. And one other thing that I just wanted to note is that the board, the IU board approved the 2023-2024 budgets to include a 5.6 salary increase for all Head Start paid staff members. And I just want to point out that, how I appreciate how much the IU board and administration is being really strategic about pay for early childhood teachers and staff. And I just definitely want to recognize that and applaud their efforts.
Good, thank you. The tech school, Chris?
Sure. The tech school is having their first-ever plant sale. It's May 9th and 10th, and it's all day at their building. The AM Student Spotlight Ceremony will be on Wednesday, February 17th, I'm sorry, May 17th from 8:30 to 9:30. And the PM Student Spotlight Ceremony will be on May 17th from 12:30 to 1:30. The tech school graduation is Wednesday, May 31st at 7 o'clock, and that will be at CMS. And then they are hosting again this summer, the Summer Career and Technology Experience. So any students that will be in 7th, 8th, and 9th grade in September, they're offering four weeks of career and technology experiences in three different areas, which are automotive technology, culinary arts, and computer networking. So more information is on their website, and it is, the cost is $125 a week, and it's from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. daily. That is my report.
Great, thank you. Legislative, Rick?
No report at this time.
Municipal and community liaisons?
White Marsh Township Day is just a couple days away, and you can already see on the fields, they're setting up the tents, and it's going to be a great time. And that'll be at Victory Fields. Thank you.
And I'll add for Conshohocken, that April 22nd, there is a Conshigreen Fest at the Fellowship House in Marywood Park. There's also free e-waste, electronic recycling, so great time to get rid of everything from spring cleaning. And just want to mention, May 21st, there's also a free paper shredding event with State Representative Mary Jo Daly at the Coldwell Banker Parking Lot from 9 to 11. So spring cleaning, time to purge and get rid of everything.
Thank you. And Gail, for the foundation?
Just a couple of items. So just wanted to give an update on recent fundraisers. So our Subaru Share the Love event raised about $20,000. And then our Feel the Love, we raised $4,100. The biggest update is around our Foundation Day, so that's coming up on May 7th at CMS. And so I wanted to personally thank Joe and his team for all the work that they've been doing to help prepare, getting it ready for Foundation Day. So thanks, Joe.
Great, thank you. Item 15 is for your information on board docs, the school activities account, athletic activities accounts, curriculum report, building report, and technology report. And now, is there any public comments? All right, seeing none. Are there any board comments?
See, I was a little slow on the draw. I just wanted to say how, thank you, Mr. Sultanic, for keeping your rates reasonable, and it's a thrill to have you back again and for another year. We appreciate your knowledge and expertise in just about everything educational and legal. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments?
I just have a question with respect to security. When our schools host events such as their carnivals that are outdoor in the spring, do we have a different plan with our security for those events?
One, we provide additional security personnel on-site to those events, not only for things such as parking and crowd control, but supervision as well. Everybody has their two-way radios out. Certainly, everyone has cell phones. And fortunately, on those events, we have a multitude of chaperones who are helping man the, so the number of teachers and parents and guardians that are on-site make those events not only fun, but very safe. But Tim, it's a great point, because Tim coordinates with all the principals when those events are, and Jess helps with that. And we have an upcoming calendar meeting for next year to identify nights like that when we need additional security on-site, whether it's concerts, fun days, those types of things.
Sorry, I forgot to mention, in terms of the Foundation Day, thank you to Joe, but I know the students aren't here, but there's a lot of students that are going to be volunteering that day. So just wanted to publicly acknowledge those students who have signed up to volunteer to help.
Okay, any other comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.